Good morning. It's my pleasure to welcome all of our Central Valley colleagues to this Town Hall meeting to discuss the Student Success Task Force recommendations. I'd like to welcome all of you to Fresno City College. My name is Deborah Blue and I'm the Chancellor of the State Center Community College District. I'd like to introduce to you the President, the interim President of Fresno City College, Mr. Tony Cantu. And the Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration, Mr. Ed Ing. It's very fitting to host this Town Hall at California's first community college. Student success started here back in 1910. In fact, we are in the old historic administration building that has just recently been restored and houses classrooms, arts, and administrative offices. In fact, yesterday, we received our first Award of Excellence for the restoration of this building at the conference of the California Community Colleges Facility Coalition. It is an honor today to host this Town Hall. And I'd like to thank you Chancellor Jack Scott for accepting our invitation. And I'd like to thank you Mrs. Lucretia Scott for being with the Chancellor as well. We have an opportunity today to make bold and courageous changes in our system that will demonstrate a commitment to social justice by balancing student access and student equity to increase student success. And I hope we will accept the challenge to be bold and courageous to make necessary changes on behalf of students. And now I would like to introduce the President of the Board of Trustees of the State Center Community College District, Ms. Dottie Smith.
Good morning, everyone. Doctor, I'd like to welcome you Chancellor Scott, I'd like to welcome you to Fresno City College, and it is an honor to host you and members of the Student Success Team. This is an important historical event, and I would encourage you all to speak freely and provide the Task Force your thoughts and input. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to thank Chancellor Scott and the Task Force for choosing State Center Community College District to host this historical event. And as our Chancellor has said, and a historical building today. Before I sit down, I'd like to introduce my, two of my fellow Board members. Mr. Ron Nishinaka, would you please stand? And Ms. Isabel Barreras, would you please stand? And once again, on behalf of the State Center Community College District, you and the audience are welcome, and you, the Task Force members, thank you and you're also welcome.
Well, it's a real thrill to be here at Fresno City College. The last time I was here on your campus was to celebrate your centennial. It was a grand event, and I was able to see many friends and partake of the great history of Fresno City College and the way that it's been serving this community for over 100 years. So, it's always good to be here and to see your beautiful campus and to see friends and others who are engaged in this wonderful enterprise of California Community Colleges. Let me tell you a little bit about the background of the Task Force and give you a little introduction, and then we're going to go specifically into the recommendations. California Community Colleges have really a wonderful history. We have particularly a wonderful history of access. We have opened our doors to not just thousands but millions of students. In fact, last fall, we served 2.6, last year, we served 2.6 million students. And we had served even more than that in a couple of years before that, but because of the constrained resources of the state of California, we were forced to cut back the number of classes that we offered. So, there's no question that we are the open door. Sometime I proudly say, you know, UC accepts the top 12 and 1/2 percent of high school graduates, CSU accepts the top 33 and 3/3 percent of high school graduates, and we accept the top 100 percent. And we do that because we feel that every resident in California, if they're, if they've qualified with a high school diploma, or even if they're over 18 and are deserving of a college education, that we want a place for them. And so, we have done that. Now, the word that is said throughout the nation is success. In other words, we want to make sure that the students who enroll complete what their goal is. This is something that's been on President Obama's agenda. He's talked about the fact that unfortunately, America's has experienced some decline in relation to other nations in terms of the number of college graduates in our younger cohorts. And so, he has accepted a very bold agenda of increasing the number of college graduates by 2020. And certainly, community colleges are key to that because throughout the nation, 40 percent of all undergraduates are enrolled in community colleges, but in California, 70 percent of all undergraduates are enrolled in community colleges. So, we have been talking about this whole issue of how can we improve success in California Community Colleges? Not that we haven't had a great deal of success, but there's always room for improvement. And once in a while, we look at some statistics and we say, "I think we could do better than that." For instance, in our California Community Colleges, of those who complete 12 units and state that they have a desire to either transfer, or get an associate degree, or get a certificate, only 52 percent achieve that goal. Now, we know that we deal with the most vulnerable student population, that we're not like the select freshman class at UC Berkeley, but we can do better than that. And so, we have formed a Student Success Task Force. This was something, incidentally, that was called on by legislative, by legislative bill, Senate Bill 1143. We picked that Task Force pretty carefully. Twenty members, including faculty, classified staff, college presidents. We have here today Ben Duran, who is the President of Merced College. He and two other college presidents have been on our Task Force. We picked students. We tried to have a broad array of individuals who would represent California Community Colleges. But we also picked some people outside the college because we feel like we had a business leader, we had a legislator, we had an academic researcher, we had also a member of a social justice organization, and I liked what Chancellor Blue said today. We are, we know there's a gap sometime between the success of people from different ethnic backgrounds. When I quoted the fact that 52 percent of those who complete 12 units, only 52 percent get a degree or certificate or transfer, I could go on and say that only 41 percent of those who are African-American and Latino do that. And so, this is a, is a drive to equity. And I think if you'll look at our recommendations, you'll see that we're very interested in opening the doors and being more successful with those who maybe come to us poorly prepared. We're quite willing to accept the poorly prepared, but we are wanting to surround them with the kind of effort that would be necessary to help them in success. Now, after we came up with 22 recommendations, we said the thing we need to do is to go out to the field. We want to go, and so, we have scheduled over 30 different appearances throughout the state. This is the one in central California. We're going to the Academic Senate, for instance, this Thursday. I will be appearing before them, and on Friday, I'll be before the Student Senate. So, we've looked at certain groups within community colleges, but we also want to say to the public, central California, northern California, southern California, Orange County, we have Town Halls that are scheduled there. So, we want to hear from you. And we can, when we say that we make these draft recommendations, I want to underline the word "draft." That simply means that they can be changed, and we're going to listen to what's being said. Now, we can't adopt all of the ideas that come out of the audience because frankly, some of the ideas actually conflict with one another, so we've got to choose one or the other. And I will say this, we have made some recommendations that are bold because, you know, if you make change, you always have to do something that's bold and different. And naturally, there's a little resistance to change that exists in all of us, that we're a little bit fearful when we're going to do things differently. We wish we had more resources, and I fight constantly before the Governor and in the legislative halls to try to increase funding for California Community Colleges. But the thing we have to do finally is to say, "Let's do the best job with the resources that we have." And so, these are designed in that way. We have two excellent people that are going to be detailing these recommendations. We'll have to go through them rather quickly, so we'll give you the opportunity to raise questions. But Amy Supinger, who has been our Executive Director of this Task Force, and has done a superb job. I have been at every meeting of the Task Force and participated in the discussions. And Amy, as the Executive Director, will go through these first half of the recommendations. And then Eric Skinner, our Vice Chancellor, our Executive Vice Chancellor, will continue that and present them. And then we'll open it up. This is a two-hour session, so we're opening it up for your ideas and your suggestions, your approval, or perhaps even your criticism or disapproval, because we're here to listen. This is our listening tour, and now I'll turn it over to Amy.
Hello. Thank you all for coming today. Quickly, before we get started on the recommendations, I wanted to alert you, most of you picked up this little half-sheet on the table outside. This is the question comment form. To the degree that you would like to talk when we get to the talking part of this day, please fill this form out. It helps us manage the, the flow of speakers a little bit better. And Stephanie Quintez, Stephanie, can you raise your hand, who's here along the wall? Will be collecting them, giving them to me up here at the podium, and then we'll be calling on you to ask your question or make your comment. We're also going to try to bundle our questions and comments, so those of you that are here to talk about the CalWorks program, for example, we'd kind of like to hear from all the CalWorks people at one time. So, anyway, Stephanie will be your recipient. We already have a question. They were out on the, the table outside the, the main doors. I see Stephanie walking out to get you one. So, we just need to very quickly run through the, the recommendations of the report, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. I could use a little help here. You need me closer to the mic? Okay. Please hold. Technical difficulties. Technical difficulty solved. Excellent. So, we know that none of you really want to participate in death by PowerPoint today, so we're going to try to avoid that. Given who we know is in the audience, we probably don't need to tell you all about the impact that community colleges make on the lives of students, on the lives of the state as a whole, and on the lives of our, our business partners in terms of community college students as graduates in the, in the workforce. I'm preaching to the choir, so I'm going to just flip through those slides very quickly. And I would like to spend my limited amount of time talking about this quickly, our process, and then our recommendations. So, as Jack talked about earlier, the Task Force was developed by statute, SB 1143. We've had a 20-member Task Force, and we've been at this for, it's a 12-month process. We're at the beginning of month 11 of the 12-month process. We have talked with all sorts of folks from community colleges, nationally, within the state, trying to figure out what the best models for student success are, what works, what doesn't work, and how can we replicate and bring to scale those programs that work in our system. So, our recommendations are divided into eight chapters. Can I just get a quick show of hands here in the audience as to who's actually looked at the report or read it? Excellent. Okay. We're going quick. The, um, one of the things that we've asked folks to do is that when you look at these recommendations, to try to look at them in totality. I know it's hard because you see a list, you immediately want to pick out, you know, where's my program, where, you know, what's the thing I'm most concerned about? But the Task Force believes that, that the recommendations are a comprehensive set, a comprehensive plan to improve the success of students. And on the whole, they rebalance the priorities of our system, and they make community colleges more responsive to the needs of students. We have them focused in eight different areas, outlined on the PowerPoint right here. I think of chapters one through five, this is sort of my, my read, chapters one through five as being the what? What is it that we want, and what is it that the Task Force wants the community college system to look like? And chapter six, seven, and eight really talking about how? How is it that we get there? The first chapter and the first set of recommendations relate to increasing college and career readiness. This quickly is a recommendation that encourages the community college, community colleges as a system to work more closely with K-12, in particular, on their common core standards, which is the new system that's coming out of, of K-12. The, um, the last time the K-12 system did sort of a significant reboot of its policies, they developed the California High School Exit Exam, which is certainly not aligned with anything that relates to going to college. So, this recommendation says, "The last time this happened, it didn't work very well for us in the community college system, and this time, we really need to be much more involved." Recommendation number two, chapter two, and this is where really the bulk of our recommendations are focused, is on strengthening support for our students. And my guess is that we have a lot of Student Services Officers here in the audience today who can relate to this recommendation. All of the components of this recommendation are tried and true. We know that when you offer supports for students at the onset, when they show up on our campus, quite simply, they do better. And the three things that we are choosing to focus on are common, centralized, and diagnostic assessment. One of the things we heard from the students on our Task Force were, since many students attend more than one college, they were being required to take a different assessment, depending on which college they went to, even though the assessments were given within, you know, two weeks of one another. And quite frankly, the Task Force finds that to be inefficient for both the state and for the student. The next set of recommendations has to do predominantly with, hold on one second, my papers are flying around here, incentivizing those student behaviors that we know lead to their success. In particular, priority enrollment in terms of how we register our students. Right now, we have a registration system that grants priority to students based solely on whether or not they were a continuing student and the number of units they have accumulated, regardless of whether or not that student was taking golf and only golf last semester, or whether or not they're a first-time new student who wants to transfer. We're rationing, and I know that's a scary word, we're rationing access to our classes right now, and we're doing it because we've suffered horrendous budget cuts in the last several years. We're just not rationing access in a way that's very logical, and we're not rationing it in a way that makes sense for the state. Align course offerings to meet student needs. If, if you are just a member of the public, most of the, you would assume that the courses that students need to transfer and to graduate or to get a certificate would be the ones that would be offered on a course schedule consistently. And, but many course-setting patterns on colleges, and some colleges do this and some colleges don't, are based on what was offered the prior semester, what faculty member wanted to teach, what course, when, rather than what students need to get their, their degree or transfer, their certificate complete. And we think that those two things need to be much more better aligned. Improving basic, the basic skills of our, of our students. Most of our students arrive, a full, I don't know, 70 percent of our students arrive on our campuses with deficiencies in math and English. The system that K-12 uses to educate these students, you know, a 15-week course, learning basics of math, clearly didn't work very well for those students when they were in elementary school and high school. And the notion that we choose to replicate that exact same methodology when they get to community colleges has personally never made much sense to me. So, the Task Force is asking that we look at much more innovative practices, taking those practices to scale, and requiring students to start addressing those basic skills deficiencies within their first year. With that, I'm going to turn it over, you're probably sick of hearing me talk, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Eric Skinner to just quickly run through the rest of these recommendations, and, and then we'll get to the, the question part of our day.
Well, good morning. It's good to be here with you today, and thank you for joining in this conversation about how we can improve our success rates in our system. This next sector of recommendations really builds off of what Amy was describing in terms of the need to improve the delivery of basic skills. Obviously, to make that happen and take that to scale system-wide requires the use of professional development to, to allow people to develop new models, to learn those new models, and move forward with implementation. The Task Force focused on the Flex Day mechanism that's already in the community college funding model. It's a primary source of funding for professional development in our system, and the Task Force recommends, recommends utilizing those Flex Days in a targeted way to, to move this success agenda forward. So, essentially, would have to do with, with engaging with faculty about establishing some, some new standards and focus in, in the use of those Flex Days. The next set of recommendations deals with the need for us to establish more efficient statewide leadership for the, for the system. What I'd like to focus on here is the Task Force's recommendation to begin with establishing a set of goals for our system. These goals would focus on not only completion rates in terms of improving our, our completion in terms of certificates, degrees, transfers, but also establishing goals in terms of improving other outcomes. What we, what the Task Force has discussed as intermediate or momentum point outcomes, such as having students complete their basic skills sequence, having students complete 15, or earn 15 units, or earn 30 units. Those interim or momentum point metrics have been shown to, if we can succeed at getting students to those points, their chance of succeeding in their overall program improves appreciably. And so, the, by establishing both some statewide goals and some campus-specific goals in terms of improving performance, that will improve the coordination and the focus of our system in terms of moving towards those objectives. Also, to facilitate this focus on success, the Task Force is recommending establishing a scorecard, which would be a new accountability mechanism, really built upon the existing ARC accountability program that the, that the community colleges operate. But to build upon that, a scorecard which will be an easily digestible, clear display communicating the success rates for, for the college. And we're hoping that that, the Task Force hopes that, that that will be a tool that will move accountability forward, will move conversations forward, both at the state level, but also at the state, at the, at the local level, between colleges, their K-12 partners, their business partners. Again, putting these success metrics at the, at the forefront of our conversations. The, the Task Force recommends, this is the last block of recommendations we'll go over, and then we'll get into questions and answers here, and, and the opportunity for your comment here very shortly. This last block of, of recommendations deal with, with the colleges and how we're funded. And the, the largest recommendation here is a proposal to consolidate categorical programs in the colleges. Essentially, this recommendation would take our roughly 21 categorical programs that we have to serve specific populations or specific activities across our system, and consolidate that into three, three clusters of programs. And so, there'd be a cluster of programs around student support, which would include the, so the, the programs that would be folded into that would be matriculation, CalWorks, financial aid, and we can go through more of the specifics, but those, those are the major ones. There'd be another cluster around, around faculty support, and so, this would include the, the part-time faculty office hours, the part-time faculty health insurance. Those funds would be folded into a pot. And the, the last pot would have to do with, with workforce development, which would fold together the Career Technical Education SB 70 funds, the apprenticeship dollars, the nursing funds, and the Economic and Workforce Development Funds, and put those in, again, a cluster of funding that could be used more flexibly to move forward those workforce preparation goals. And the, the theory here is that by, by breaking down these silos and allowing local leaders greater flexibility to use the dollars for their, for a more general purpose, again, as defined by, in the Student Services realm, the workforce realm, and the faculty support realm, you know, allowing greater local flexibility will allow those, those dollars to be, be used more effectively. And I, you know, I think that part of the rationale of the Task Force was that as these programs have been cut so significantly, there's a, the, the ability for them to function effectively within their individual silos has been diminished, and it's time for us to think about some new ways to deliver these, these services and supports to our students. A related recommendation here is to augment the, the Student Support Initiative, so that's a cluster of student services programs, to augment that and to treat that as our top budget priority going into next year's budget. And while the state budget continues to be lean, there's reason to hope that there may be, you know, over time, Proposition 98 will force the state to spend additional money on the colleges. And the Task Force, you know, if there's one takeaway, recommendation, or kind of a, you know, kind of a core finding of the Task Force, it's been that, that we have gutted our student support programs. And those are critical programs to help students find a pathway and to stay on a pathway towards success. And we need to find a way to restore capacity in that realm, counselors, advisors, other student support programs. And so, that would be the top budget priority going forward. And lastly, the, the last recommendation I'd, I spotlight here is a proposal to provide an alternative funding mechanism for basic skills courses. It would be an option. Colleges wouldn't have to use it if they didn't want to, but essentially, what it would allow is for colleges to, rather than receive the traditional FTS-based apportionment funding, you know, funding based on seat time for their students in basic skills courses, they instead could opt for a funding model that would allocate funding to the college based on their success at moving a student from below college level to college level. And so, actually achieving that, that objective of moving a student to college level. What this proposal does would, it would provide districts with greater flexibility about how they deliver their program to the students. So, rather than having to rely on the, this, essentially, this dosage of resources that's allocated out by the FTS funding model, instead, colleges could apply a more intensive, accelerated set of services and supports and instruction, could involve a whole host of different types of interventions in a more intensified way, and receive funding for that, simply based on achieving the objective of moving a student to college level. So, and, and the, you know, the hope with that is that it could really provide a, an opportunity for, for innovation and for, really, a laboratory for, for colleges to find effective ways to, to help our students succeed, particularly in that basic skills realm. So, with that, I think that's the, the body of the recommendations that we were hoping to cover, and I'll turn it back over to Amy now.
So, you are our second Town Hall. We were in Los Angeles last week, and we made adjustments to our program and our schedule based on that experience. So, as you see, we tried to do this in, in 30 minutes worth of time. We know that we missed details, but we did so because we knew that you wanted to talk with this group, and we wanted to talk with you. So, with that, I'm going to take some of the, the comment and feedback forms here from Stephanie. In addition, we are being webcast, so there are two considerations about being webcast that I want to make people aware of. The first is that folks are submitting questions to us online, so every once in a while, we're going to pause and take a question from our online audience. The second thing, and this is a direction to you as the audience, as well as my panelists up here, and I need to remind myself, which is to talk into the mic. While the room may be able to hear you, the folks online cannot unless you talk into the mic. the mic. So please do that, and please don't start talking until the mic gets to you. So we're going to have folks that are going to walk around with the microphones and start taking your questions. No, we're losing our students. Stay, stay. Class. Damn that education. Gets in the way. Okay, so we have a couple of questions for folks who are here from Reedley College. Nancy Frampton, where are you? Nancy, the mic's going to come to you.
I actually have seven questions, so I'm going to ask my first question, and if there's time, I'd like to ask my other questions later.
Excellent choice.
Okay. I would like to know how the task force sees ESL programs. Those are credit and non-credit programs as we know them today in the California community colleges, changing based on task force recommendations.
Okay. Chancellor, you want to take that question?
Yes. We, as we've tested these recommendations, we realized that one or two of them have some unintended consequences that we didn't realize, and I think ESL is one of them. There was no intention, for instance, of eliminating ESL non-credit courses because in many cases, these are very vocational in nature. Someone maybe is a recent immigrant and does not really want to enroll in ESL in the credit program because they're not interested in getting a certificate or a degree, but they are desperately in need of better facility with the English language in order, because of their work. Maybe someone's a gardener, and he may want to start his own business, but realizes that his language skills have to be improved in order for him to facilitate his conversation with his customers. So I can assure you, and we'll work on this. By the way, I would, number one, as I will assure you that we're not trying to eliminate non-credit ESL programs. And number two, realize that all of these recommendations are, have to be vetted. In some cases, they would require legislation. In some cases, we'll have regulation through the Board of Governors, and in some cases, it'll simply be our pointing to best practices. So there's various ways of implementation. So we're not, you know, don't get the idea that suddenly, if the Board of Governors approves these recommendations, which is in the bill, by the way, and that occurs in January, don't get the idea that in some way or another, that the approval of these recommendations means that all of these recommendations are immediately adopted. And that's the reason we've gone out to the field like we have, is that we realize that we need maybe to tweak, to clarify a few of these recommendations, which might have had some unintended consequences. So thank you for that.
And if I could just very quickly add on, I think another way that recommendations would affect our ESL programs is probably an expansion in course sections. And there, and I don't want to take too much of the time here, but there are several recommendations here that are very much geared at reducing the enrichment courses and the avocational courses in our system and redirecting those base resources back towards the core missions around basic skills, transfer, and career technical education. And so we think over the recommendations I've adopted would push our curriculum in that direction and would actually probably add capacity is our, is my estimate of what the task force recommendations would do.
So it looks like, Felissa Meter, that you also had a related question on basic skills. Do you want to ask that?
I'm an ESL learner myself, and we had invited one of our former students, Carla Calderon, who has a master's in technology right now, and he studied at six-level speed low transfer in a credit program at our community college, Reedley College, and I'm an ESL instructor at the same college. Now, that's my worry, because reading between the lines and reading out a second draft of your report, that we would only have two levels below transfer. So my question is, is that the goal of your committee?
Well, number one, that was discussed, but that's not part of the recommendations. It didn't, that did not, it was discussed. Here's the problem we have. When we take students, say we put them four levels below, the fatality rate there is exceedingly high. Something's wrong. In other words, if you say to somebody, you've tested and you've got to take four levels of basic skills before you can even take college English or college math, the statistics are less than 10% of them ever make it. So something's wrong with our present process. We feel that if we can work toward accelerating basic skills, intensifying basic skills to the point that someone can get from this point to this point in a year's time, that it's much more likely they're going to be able, to be able to get into the college level. And we have a lot of examples throughout the state, such as at Cabrillo College and also at Chabot College, where those intensified basic skills remedial, as we used to call them, that when we really sit and we intensified and put it in a context, for instance, if you're a construction person and you're wanting to go into construction and you're insufficient in math, wouldn't it make sense in order to contextualize that math basic skills course to have it center around construction problems? They're much more likely to succeed. So we've got to rethink our basic skills because we're having too great a rate of failure. And some things that are being tried in other parts of the state have really been successful. And, you know, I want to applaud those who maybe start at the fourth, the teachers who start at the fourth level, but statistically, the evidence is that very few students who start at four levels below and have to go through four semesters before they can ever even take college English or college math, the problem is they get discouraged and they quit. And I'm not sure that another approach will succeed, but I know what we're doing now when we start that low isn't succeeding.
I'd like to just add my comments to that. There are, there were some strong conversations about this very issue amongst the task force members, and one of the concerns was when, there was this conversation, there was discussion about, you know, how far down should credit courses be offered in basic skills? The concern of a group, of a number of the group, was that there is a significant population that California community colleges have been serving for a long time. And the second part of the recommendation really talked in more general terms about the need for California to work together with the K-12 system and adult education to create a delivery model for this sort of a population. Frankly, for some of us, that just didn't resonate, only because there's this population that we literally could set adrift unintentionally by doing, by doing what had been recommended. So this notion of having a real substantive conversation about how we do deal with that population, Chancellor Scott is absolutely correct. We all have students who we can bring forward and say, this one took nine years to get through, but ultimately made it. But they're so far and few between that I, as a Latino man, for instance, often go in the community, and I talk to parent groups and student groups, and I tell them, you know, you need to come to us, and you need to learn, to take ESL, to take these classes, and they get very, very excited. But then when I look at the statistics, I note that many of those people did come, and they tried it, and they were discouraged for whatever reason, and they dropped out. And when I've run into a couple of them in the, out in the, in the community, they said, you know, I understand that education's important, but I just wasn't, I'm just, maybe it's just not for me. But it is for them. The thing is that we need to provide them the vehicle to allow them to be successful, and the way we've been doing it just hasn't been working for us.
So is there anyone else who wanted to talk on the topic of basic skills and wants to bring up an issue or ask a question that we have not already covered? It looks like there's one. I actually, there was a woman behind you that I was pointing to.
My name is Lyndy Cryf. I'm faculty here at Fresno City College. My question is regarding the faculty, the basic skills student versus the basic skill classes. At least here at Fresno City College, our basic skills committee has done a very good job of really emphasizing the idea that we don't have a basic skill student, that they take, they take, I mean, they don't have a class, we have a student, that they take other classes while they're enrolled in these basic skills remedial classes. So if we are only focusing on the basic skills class, those students are in other classes as well, how do we, how do we do with that if we are basically creating like a two-tier kind of a system?
Well, actually, there's nothing that will prevent those students from taking other classes. There are classes that have prerequisites, as you know, that, let's say, you have to have college-level English or college-level math, wouldn't do you any good for, well, I'm sorry, wouldn't do you any good, but it would be highly unlikely you would succeed in chemistry if you didn't have basic-level math as a background. So there are some classes that'll have prerequisites, but there are other classes. You could take classes in ceramics or a whole lot of other subjects that would not require either basic-level English or basic-level math, so we're not affecting that. However, one of our recommendations is that a student should attempt to enroll in, if they, if the assessment says they're lacking, they must attempt to enroll in a basic skills course in their first year, because we have, once again, a lot of students who maybe test poorly, and then they go two or three years without ever taking those basic courses, and they can't get a degree, you know, and they can't transfer. So we've got to have a program that says, in effect, if the assessment says that you need either basic skills math or basic skills English, that's what we used to call remedial, then you need to take that in your first year. And if you attempt and you can't get in the class, that's another matter. But we can't, once again, it doesn't prove very successful if somebody attempts to enroll in classes in which, as I said, chemistry, that requires a certain level of math, and then suddenly they enroll, and the failure rate's very high.
Okay, so we're going to move off the basic skills topic. If we have time, hopefully, we can come back to it. So let me move on to Kay Croctel with the Foster Parent Association and the Foster Care and Kinship Program. Oh, we're missing your microphone. And she's following the instructions and not talking. Excellent.
Thank you. It is with grave concern about California's most vulnerable population, the estimated 60,000 children and youth living in foster care, that I stand before you to speak this morning. As a foster parent and an adoptive parent of five children, and being the president of the Fresno County Foster Parent Association, I am distressed that a crucial program which trains and maintains mandatory education hours for more than 35,000 foster parents and other caregivers, which is offered by the California Community College Foster and Kinship Education Program, is in danger of being decimated by proposed changes under the draft recommendation 8.1. I urge you to remove foster care from recommendation 8.1 to consolidate select categorical programs and keep these education opportunities for the families who care for our children in out-of-home care.
And if I could respond to that, we hear that comment loud and clear. We've heard that around the state on a number of programs. You know, earlier, I articulated the rationale behind the recommendation of providing local leaders with the flexibility to use resources to meet the highest local needs. And I can assure you, the college presidents, for instance, on the task force felt would, I imagine, and we have expressed strongly that, for instance, foster care programs are the types of programs that they would continue. So that the assumption that those programs would go away simply because of flexibility was provided was, was not what was envisioned here. That said, this is a listening tour. I'm telling you, we hear you loud and clear, and that'll be one of the issues the task force wrestles with when they meet again in November, is giving some thought to perhaps which programs should be in the block.
So it looked like there were several people here that wanted to talk about that program. Do you feel that your question was answered and that Kay did a good job of synopscizing your issues, or would, it looks like I have Sue Shaw, Ursula Schneider, and Linda Paredes? Okay, let me get the microphone to you.
Hi, I'm Sue Shaw, and I am the coordinator of the Foster Kinship Care Program here at Fresno City College, and I'm also a foster parent and also an adoptive parent of two of these children from the child welfare system. I think our other big concern is that Prop 8, or Prop 98 dollars of just a little over $5 million is what funds this program throughout the 62 community colleges that it's in currently. And that, they draw down another $5 million of title-y federal funds. So our worry is that, and that's a requirement, if that money's not there, then there's no drawdown. So it doesn't seem fiscally sound to give up $5 million of federal funds, and it doesn't seem fiscally possible to run these programs on half the dollars that they're getting now. So if we can only roll over $5 million of Prop 98 monies as flexible funds, we lose that $5 million of federal match. So that's our concern as well.
Well, we do hear you, and we are, we do feel like that often the local campus has a better feel for the way in which they ought to spend the money. However, we believe there are special programs that we won't include in the block grant. We've already made a commitment not to include EOPS in that, and we will give consideration to the foster program as well. Let me point out to you also that any change like this will require legislation, and you can be assured that all of these issues will be discussed before a legislative committee if indeed we choose to propose this. It's always kind of touchy, this whole issue, and I've heard it discussed. I was in the legislature for 12 years, and I've heard the whole issue discussed of block granting. The argument in favor of block granting is that it gives a local district greater flexibility in, it doesn't cut the funding, it gives the local district greater flexibility in how to spend the money. What we find, though, that often when we bring this up, every program stands up and says, well, don't touch our program. We were all for block granting, but not X or Y or Z or whatever it is. So we'll consider all those things, but if we listen to every special program, we'll end up with those 30 different silos that we've got now with all the reporting that's necessary and so forth, and there will be no block granting. So we're going to listen, and there's no question that we're going to not go totally to block granting. But we, but I do have to tell you, the rationale behind block granting was not to do away with programs, but was done with the idea in mind that maybe Fresno City College has a better idea of the way to spend that money than Sacramento does, or maybe Reedley College, or maybe Merced College. So all of the idea of the block granting was not to reduce funding for any program, it was simply to say that local programs often, that local situations are often in a better circumstance to determine how that those money should be spent. But don't worry that certainly if a certain program is matched with federal dollars and so forth, all of that will be considered. That won't just be, and so once again, these are recommendations. We're going to change the recommendation as a result of the input that we hear. We want your input, that's why we've come out here. And so remember that between this draft, the final recommendations, and then whatever's enacted in the legislature, is a long way.
So continuing on the theme, did you have a foster care kinship question? Okay.
My name is Linda Paredes, and I just want to add to what Sue and the other lady has said in regards to the foster and kinship care program. In addition to losing the federal dollars, we are a core component of the federal Title 4B plan that defines how we provide foster care training in the state of California. Failure to comply with that plan will bring, could bring severe fiscal penalties to the state of California for not meeting the needs of foster care providers. Thank you.
So there have been several questions at other town halls and online, and actually one of the people who's watching us online, Alicia, who's at Cabrillo College. one of the people who's watching us online, Alicia, who's at Cabrillo College, asks a similar question related to the CalWorks program, and there are probably some folks in the audience who want to talk about that one as well. Her question specifically is, how do the community colleges intend to draw down federal TANF dollars and state CalWorks funds when you block rent the CalWorks program? And I can let Eric address that question, because I think it also applies to the foster care and kinship one, but in short, we're looking at that right now, we're looking at the drawdown, the matching, the matching issues, both for foster care kinship and for CalWorks and the TANF dollars, and at the onset, we're not convinced that you cannot continue to draw down the matching dollars, so we understand the concerns, and I know the task force is gonna look at this and address it as well, but Eric, did you want to add anything?
I, I would just briefly add that the issue of the, the matches against federal funds is really something that's generally done, it's, it's calculated at the state level, and, and I would just add that just because the state has, as in the past, used particular pots of our funding as match, doesn't mean that's the only way that California could, could achieve eligibility. For instance, our bog fee waivers have been used as a match for TANF funds, and so, the long and short of it is that these match issues are technical issues that would have to be resolved as the proposal moved through the legislative and budget, the state legislative budget process, and so they're, they're real issues, but I don't think they're insurmountable, but they should be taken into account along with the other policy implications.
So is there anyone else that wants to talk about categorical program consolidation generally, or the CalWorks consolidation more specifically? No? Okay. Then I'm just gonna move on to the next, Ben Anderson with the Associated Students. Ben, are you here? Or did Ben have to go to class? Nope, Ben's here. Excellent.
I wouldn't have missed this. First of all, let me say thank you, I'm sorry, Ben Anderson, I'm Senator with the Associated Student Government, which is our local ASO on campus, I'm also the Region 5 Chair of the SSCCC, the Student Senate of California Community Colleges. We welcome you here, we're really glad to have you, glad that you chose Fresno, glad that you chose Fresno City College, we're glad that you're here. My question involves student representation, I want to do a kind of a, a pullback from recommendations, specific recommendations that we're discussing today, and I want to know what, what your view is on student representation and its impact on student success. Here on campus, we also have a student success task force, and one of the things that they're working on is a program slash club that the students have been working on for a while, it's called Student Success Club, and as a student leader, I kind of feel that it is, not kind of, I do feel, that is pertinent, that we have the buy-in from our students, it helps us to hold them, our peers accountable, which I believe is pertinent to student success, so I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, I, I certainly agree with you, and, and I will tell you that Friday, I will be in San Jose speaking to the Student Senate, and all those student representatives will have an opportunity to have their voice heard. We had the Student Senate President on our task force, and to put it bluntly, students are our customers, so if we don't listen to them, we, we're kind of foolish, and one of the things that you see that we've recommended here is that, that we move more directly into allowing student needs to determine our course offerings. It's not that we don't at all now, it's not an implication that none of that occurs, but we want to have every student who is a student with, with a goal in mind to have an educational plan, and then we're gonna look at those educational plans and determine our course offerings to, to a great degree as a result of those educational plans. So if anything, this, this whole task force has been very student-oriented. In fact, of course, we're simply asking the question, why, we, we know that many of our students succeed, but those that don't succeed, if there's any way in which we can be helpful, is there any way we can be supportive, is there any way we can see that the success rate of students is greater than it presently is? We're never gonna have 100% success, but we are going to try, through the student success scorecard, to say to a college, here's your scorecard, and we can look at these metrics, how many have completed 50, 15 units, how many have completed 30 units, how many have gotten a degree, how many have gotten a certificate, how, how many course completions do you have? So we can look at that, and over the next four or five years, that college can say, we're here now, and it's our intention to move forward in this way.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add a comment, Ben, I'm happy to, to respond to you, because I'm Ben also, so. And I, getting, and then, and then drilling down, maybe down to the campus level, I'm, I'm delighted that you folks have formed a Student Success Club. I think that's a wonderful gesture on your part, and I would recommend that, that you continue to talk with your students, and even at the statewide level, to ensure that they do participate in the shared governance and, and master planning that takes place on your campus. For instance, on my campus, we have a master planning and shared governance committees where students are in fact represented, and students, when they are, when they're willing to be vocal and heard about issues that surround students, the faculty and administration do in fact listen. One of the things that, for instance, that isn't, maybe it is directed, I mean, is related to student success, but it certainly is, is a big issue for students, is the notion of the cost of textbooks, and how faculty go about selecting their textbooks, and the students have stood up and said, you know what, have you thought about this, 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 and that? So actually, the students and our faculty have created a, a small group where they really are talking about textbooks and how they go about doing that. On a broader scale, the students are, are in fact participating in the discussion, we do have a Student Success Committee on our campus where there is student representation, and the students are asking, what about this and what about that? And we do have some basic skills students on there in addition to, to students who are not necessarily participating in basic skills, because this, this task force really is talking about student success. We, we've talked a lot this morning about basic skills, which is important, because so many of our students need in fact basic skills. But when the faculty have an opportunity to hear the point of view of the students, it is amazing how they can literally sit down and start having those conversations. So first of all, I applaud you for your, for your club, and I would just encourage you locally to get as many of your students to participate, and then to have them literally go out and report out. What we know is that if people sit on committees, but that's all they do, and they don't share with their constituents what's taking place, they can't very well speak on their behalf, so.
I'll just make one parting comment, you know, it's interesting to me, in the development of a club for student success, because what you have done on much more informally is what we already know via the research works, which is student learning communities and the use of cohorts. So two things that colleges can do to try to foster student success, and, you know, our report recommends that colleges take a look at block scheduling, the ability to schedule courses in blocks in a way that move groups and cohorts of students through, so that they can establish those relationships, support one another, develop study teams and the like. So, you know, in the absence of a formalized structure, I applaud you for, for developing your own. I'm gonna go next to Lydia Anderson. Lydia, are you somewhere? There she is.
I'm actually asking this question on behalf of one of my faculty colleagues in the Social Science Department, and we would just ask the task force to consider, I know we're in a time of limited financial resources, but when we as faculty look at student success, we have so many students that show up on our doorstep, they're in our offices with personal issues, their house has been foreclosed upon, they're homeless, they have deaths in their family, and I teach business, I am not a trained counselor, and we would really ask that you consider some type of resource, a trained social worker, somebody trained in psychology, that's dedicated to addressing these resources, so that we can send them somewhere where they're actually gonna get, get appropriate resources. There, there are resources in the community that many of us as faculty have pulled together, and we open up our drawer and give them a phone number or a website, and we pray that they get the assistance, and then they disappear from our classroom, and, and if you really look at the need of what's gonna help students be successful, we need a consistent resource, trained resource that we can send our students to. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that suggestion. All of our campuses are, are obviously restrained by lack of resources. You know, I know when I was at Pasadena City College as president, we had a psychologist, and I think they still do there, not just counselors, but actually someone who was a full-time psychologist, and even then, of course, they sometime had to refer students off the campus to, say, a psychiatrist or something of that nature, but we know that our students are, you know, they're not just students in terms of academics, they're students in terms of personal crises, they're students in terms of being homeless, they're students in terms of family distress, there's all kinds of things that are there, and all we do is, of course, of pushing the money to a local campus, and they have to make those decisions as to the kind of personnel that they will hire, and the demands are so great, whether it's more full-time faculty, or more counselors, or more tutors, or whatever, and your point is well-taken, I'm not sure we can come up with a solution.
Yeah, I, I would add to that, I, I don't know that we have the solution within the task force, but I do know that, that one, the rec, this notion of the recommendation of the flexibility at the local campus is one of, is one of the areas where a campus may, may decide, you know, we have so many of these students going through these sorts of issues at this particular point in time, maybe we need to put some dollars in that, in that direction. One of the constraints that we have frankly is on our general fund, which is, which requires 50% of the dollars to be spent on instruction, not on students, but on instruction, and, which is students, I mean, I, don't get me wrong, but what if someone were to have a conversation that said, what if we were to look at the 50% law and think in terms of student success, which would include student services, because we're not the K-12. That law really kind of goes back to the K-12 system, and we're not K-12, and there is a, there is a significant amount of student services, and by the way, probably the reason that a lot of student services is categorical, because you have to keep away from that, that, that 50% law. Now, I'm not saying it's a bad thing to spend 50% of your dollars on instruction, it's what we do, that's what we're primarily there for, but as we, as we run into populations that are having these kinds of problems on campuses, it would also be nice to be able to have the local campus decide how to, how to utilize their, their, their general fund dollars in ways that could address those kinds of issues.
Next up, Carlos Calderon. Carlos, are you somewhere?
My name is State Carlos Calderon, thank you, Ms. Felisa Hill and Nancy Franton, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my story. My profession is in information system technology, and I work for a state senator at the district office as a computer operator and information technology support. I want to say, what is important at this moment in my profession is not my degree, it is my professional career and how I got here. It is the process, but it is important, it is the process to help people reach their It is the process that takes people to become successful. I learned English at Reedley College in our ESL program. The ESL program started at this, at six levels below transfer. I started at the lowest level, there was nothing lower than that, and, and there was Felisa Hill on my first day of class. This program was the key to my success, to my academic and professional success. It is the program that prepared me to take any challenges in my academic career. There is nothing that compares to this in this area, nothing to the ESL program in our community college. Finally, I just wanna say that I'm thankful to be part of the, our community college, that not only gave me a professional career, but it prepared me to, to give a better life, a lifestyle to my family, to my wife, to my daughter, that she is here present, and also to show others that it can be done. The program would only work if we make it work, it's up to the student to make it work, and I made it work, and I know many others will make it work.
Thank you for the story. It's, it's nice to hear student success stories.
Amy, I think we'll just take his picture and put it in there, at the front instead of the one you have there now.
Oh, excellent. I, I saw someone with a camera over here, perhaps, perhaps you'd pose for us. Richard Lindstrom with a, with a question about kind of shorter-term vocational courses?
My name is Richard Lindstrom, I'm the Director of the Police Academy here in Fresno, at Fresno City College. I'm also, I represent the California Academy Directors Association on the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, and I just want to know what your thoughts are on the short-term classes that we do. We're not just the Police Academy, we do a lot of advanced officer and technical courses that really assist the agencies in our local area on upgrading the skills and training at their agencies. There's 20-some community college police academies around the state. How are these courses gonna fit into this new model? Because our students per se don't have an education plan that you spoke of, they might not necessarily, well, they do have to declare a major in their, when they apply to each one of these short-term classes. Will this affect, and they are credit courses, will this affect the generation of FTEs dollars for these types of courses? It would also apply to the fire academies around the state and possibly others. Your thoughts?
Well, we, we certainly have nothing in this that would in any sense hurt short-term vocational courses. That's part of your ed plan, if your ed plan is to take two courses in computers, or two courses in Police Academy, or, or one course, there's nothing in this. In fact, when we talk about the problem we have of registration, we are not in any sense, in fact, career technical education is one of the three main purposes of the community colleges. What we're really trying to address is the fact that in this time, and I want to tell you a startling statistic, when we took the 8% cut in, in community colleges in the year 2009, 10, we educated 133,000 fewer first-time students. Did that, was that because we had less demand? No, it was because they were in the back of the registration line. We in no sense want to crowd out someone who is seeking job training, who is seeking transfer, who is seeking basic skills. We are perhaps asking the question, number one, if someone is an adult and likes to take, say, French, because they happen to be going to Paris next year, that really, that seat ought not to be taken first by that individual and crowd out the individual who just graduated from high school and is seeking transfer. There was a time when the community colleges could educate come one, come all. Now the state has, in the last three years, has reduced our funding by 13%. We don't think it's quite fair for those first-time students to be crowded out by someone who is seeking a course simply for personal enrichment. Or we also are asking the question, what about the person who's been here on the campus for now 10 semesters, has accumulated 120 units, maybe has completed 25, and just is still here? We're gonna say, it's time for you to make some progress, and it's not right for you, even though you're a continuing student, to crowd out that person who comes here with the serious intent of either getting a job, because they're out of work, or seeking a transfer, or needs basic skills. of work, or seeking a transfer, or needs basic skills. That's all we're talking about here. We're really trying to say, let's look at our registration process, not crowding out anybody who's coming for a short-term vocational course because they're improving themselves vocationally. And not really, we'd like to educate everybody who wants to come here. But if we are having to cut back, if there were 140,000 students who couldn't even get into community colleges, then we've got to ask the question, what ought to be our registration priorities? And I know that's a hard question to ask. We haven't asked it before in some places. Some colleges, by the way, are already doing this because you have the freedom to do it. But there's nothing here that is anti-vocational. In fact, this is going to say in effect, that's one of our primary purposes, is career technical programs. In fact, the legislature, when they cut us back by 8%, they actually said that was their intent, that we not cut classes in career technical education, transfer, and basic skills. So we already have some direction. We think that direction makes sense in these tough times. I know there are those who maybe think that the class of ceramics for older adults just ought to be kept going, and maybe we ought not to schedule two more sections of basic English. I don't happen to agree with that, and I'm an older adult. So, and you know, if I wanted to go down and take a class in guitar or something like that, so be it. But I shouldn't be first in line. I think I ought to have to wait my turn for those people who are desperately in need of community college education, whether it's job creation or transfer.
The one thing I would add, Mr. Lindstrom, is that this issue came up before the task force. And the overall philosophy of this group of 20 folks, this task force, was that the community college system for, you know, the last 50 years, has really based its policies on the student who was the exception to the rule. We could always find the one student who didn't follow the norm. And the task force believed that the state, and remember, the legislature and the Board of Governors are the primary audiences for this report, but that they should start making policies based on the bulk of the students rather than the exception. That said, we had several CEOs on our task force who specifically called out these short-term vocational programs, specifically police and fire. And so each of the recommendations has the ability for local colleges to exempt students who don't fit the rule for whatever the case is. So in this case, you know, locally, any recommendation that runs counter to, you know, the short-term vocational training of police and fire would be able to be exempted at the local level. Anyone else on sort of short-term vocational programs before we move on? I have a comment card slash request from Michelle, and Michelle, I can't read your last name, but it says you're a DSPS student.
My name is Michelle Liscano, and I'm going to do, I think, a little like of three versions because it'll cover it all. First of all, I'm also one of the success stories too. I'm a Pecumatria of the Chantilly Indians. I come from one of the locally neighboring tribes. And what I wanted to share is that I come from the DSPNS program, ELPNS program. And I'm the veteran. So with that in mind, I would like to share by, when we have the grant applications, when we put in the words for disability veterans or special need children, and I call them children, sorry, they should be students, but at my time and age, it is children, we have no problem dispersing the words so the grants can be allocated to the top of the file. My other issue is that if we have the general funding that pays up to 50% to give back to instructions on the institutions here, maybe we can bring Paul Grossman in. You know, he represented the ADA community back in 1973 and put in place the Rehabilitation Act for our veterans. Let's get positive incentives for our students. Just not do because I can attitude, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, it's just I'm choosing the simple words. And then with closing, I'd just like to add just a quick note to inform everyone that the governor signed into law 89, which is the AMIANO, known as the Seth Law yesterday, which was October 11th, which is the anti-bullying bill that applies to pupils who are perceived to be disabled. He also signed the AB 620 block, which is, it's regarding to us, the higher education anti-bullying bill that provides comparable protections and rules of student conduct in community college and public institutions of higher education. So it is law, and I just want everybody to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hector Duarte? Hector, are you here?
Well, you're going to Hector. I do want to mention that we have a member of the Board of Governors here in our audience who's from Porterville and has served very ably for quite a number of years on the Board of Governors, and that's Gary Reed. Gary, raise your hand.
I guess my statement is this, is that in the early 20s, 30s, and 40s, 50s, early 60s, there was block grant funding already existed. Any student could go to a community college and get an education, but the system failed. The system didn't do a good job of being sensitive and understanding the challenges that these students brought to the campus. And in 1969, Senate Bill 164 was established to help those students who are disadvantaged. I think by block grant funding and allowing the districts to manage the money and put the money where they think is best, we're going to go back to those days. And I think that right now we open the doors to 100%, like you said, Chancellor, 100%. And I think we're going to be shooting more like 30% if we close those doors. These programs that we talk about were made for a reason because the system failed. And I think if we go back to funding these programs that way, we're going to go back to those days. And we want to keep our doors open to all students in our community, not just those that are privileged or those that could come to the school. So to me, that's my comment, and I hope that you do listen. We do have a lot at stake in this. I've been working with disadvantaged students for 22 years. My heart is working with students who are disadvantaged, coming from Michoacan, Mexico, when I was four, being a field worker till I was a junior in high school. I understand the importance of an education and how that enables people to obtain power to make changes so that we can be part of the community. Let's please not shut those doors on these students. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, and what I'd like to add is perhaps a little perspective, and just to emphasize that the task force throughout its deliberation has been very clear that it does not want to push forward towards student, improving our student success rates at the expense of particular populations. Essentially, the goal here is to move forward and have a very clear focus on, for instance, equity gaps. That's one of the key concepts that the task force has stuck to throughout, and for very much, I think, for reasons that very much in alignment with what you just indicated. And so, one of the most material ways that that is reflected in the task force's recommendations is that in both the goals that I described earlier, and then the local scorecards as well, the success metrics that would be included in terms of the success rates would also be broken out by subgroup, and by race and ethnicity. And the goal of that, that was one of the approaches that the task force wanted to adhere to, to ensure that this drive towards success was lifting all boats and was moving forward, and not excluding populations, but rather to improve rates across the board. And, you know, some of the statistics that Chancellor Scott shared earlier really reflect unfortunately that our system has, does fail our students of color at a greater rate than, you know, than our Anglo students. And those are exactly the types of problems that we're aiming to address through the task force's recommendations.
And I might add that of the 20-member task force, nine of them were of a minority background, so we had some, obviously, some people who had a great concern about the interest of what we might call underrepresented students or students of color.
So the next question comes from Conrad Perez. Conrad, are you here? Has it already been addressed, or is something new? Okay.
Yes, with the recommendations such as the implementation of the scorecards with fundings attached, as well as other recommendations, it seems like the task force is pointing towards standardized testing, which has been, you know, which has been going on in the K-12 for quite a few years now. According to, in September, the College Board reported, quote, "SAT reading scores for the high school class of 2011 were the lowest on record, and combined reading and math scores fell to their lowest point since 1995." So I kind of feel, and maybe just my opinion, but I think others as well, that standardized testing in the high school level has had an adverse effect on teaching and learning that atmosphere, to the point that students are coming to us so poorly prepared that it warrants the creation of this task force. And so my question would be, will there be standardized testing? And if so, could you point to successful results of standardized testing?
There's no standardized testing that's been recommended in our draft recommendations. What colleges want to do in terms of testing will be up to them. Now, we do recommend assessment, that is, an entering student, and we do recommend that it be common assessment rather than 112 different assessment all over the map in 112 different colleges. But there's nothing in here about standardized testing. One thing we do do is recommend a closer tie and coordination between high schools and community colleges. We've found that in college, community colleges who institute this, that in turn, they're much better, they in turn, this exchange of ideas between high schools and community colleges lead to better-prepared students who come out of the high schools. And so if we have more communication between high schools and community colleges, like we'll say, the community college English teachers meet with the high school English teachers, I think we'll see better-prepared students coming to our campus. The exit exam, as you know, and I think maybe, what is it, 10th and 8th grade or something like that, that it really, the fact that someone passed the high school exit exam doesn't mean they're prepared for college.
And let me just add a couple of comments to that. I'm not sure if you were referring to the report card and whether that would be standardized testing. No, that's not, because the K-12ers, you know, they do these standardized tests, and then they list all the districts, and they pit them against each other, and this one's doing better than this, and they don't. Our report card would really be based on metrics that would be developed by the system with respect, for instance, to momentum points. How many students are in fact meeting that 15-unit momentum point? How many are certificates? You know, how are you being successful? And then drilling down into that data and then looking at specific groups. How are we doing with disabled students? How are we doing with this particular ethnic group? To allow the school then to refocus and say, it doesn't look like we're doing particularly well with this particular group. But it's not really, it's not based on any standardized testing. Now, I do want to piggyback a little bit on the Chancellor's comments with respect to the need to work closely with the K-12 system. Because here in the Central Valley, we have an organization called the Central Valley Higher Ed Consortium. And we recently received a grant, actually, two grants. One from the Department of Labor, a $19 million grant that's going to be distributed amongst six colleges that's dedicated primarily to workforce training. But the other grant came from the California Policy Foundation organization, and it was a $600,000 grant specifically to have community colleges here in the Central Valley work with the K-12 systems to look at articulation of the standards. And we had an aha moment, for instance, when we were talking with some of the K-12 people, we came to the realization, now those of you who are English teachers know this, but in the, in high school, their English is literature-based. They come to us, we're doing composition. The gateway course, you know, our English 1A is composition, and students aren't writing in the high schools as much as they used to perhaps. So those are the kinds of alignments that need to take place, talking about some policy changes that the K-12ers may need to make in terms of the kinds of courses where they would put their students. The other thing we found was that K-12 students, to meet their math requirements, not if they're university-bound necessarily, but a lot of times they meet their math requirements by the end of their 10th grade. So when they take our assessment exam, they haven't had math for two years. So those are the sorts of conversations we want to have with the K-12 system, which hopefully will prepare the students a bit better. And by the way, let me say that teachers in the K-12 system are doing a good job of teaching what they're asked to teach. It's just that what they're asked to teach isn't aligning with what we need. And that's the kind of conversation we're having.
So we have roughly 30 minutes left together, and I have a couple of request-to-speak cards from folks who wanted to talk about basic skills, which we've already talked about. So I wanted to, before we went back to and started repeating on a topic, I wanted to make sure that everyone who wanted to talk about something else or wanted to be heard on another issue was heard. So it looks like I have a comment or a question right here in the front row. Can you wait till the mic? It's coming. I know. Oh, right over here.
Jenna Beard in Fresno City College. I just have a comment here, and I was looking through and trying to understand clearly about your recommendation, Chapter 8, on that, the student support initiative funds and everything, and what that is tied to. And wanted to really direct my comment to prior to direction for students, that before they get an ed plan, before they have a major, before they have a plan and a direction, that they really need career development. They need some career classes and have that option, and some study skill classes. And those are key elements. And with it, the funds drying up or decreasing, those are the areas of the classes that have been cut. And those are areas that the student success plan, I'd love to see that addressed well. And as a flow from high school to college, it used to be part of high school, and it is, that conversation is wonderful. I loved what you were saying. Because it is no longer offered in most high schools. They bumped it to the middle schools, and the middle schools do not have the hours to address it. So I just wanted to put a plug in for career planning and for study skills development as a key building block. Thank you.
Okay, one of our recommendations says that we recommend a student success course, particularly for those who test needing basic skills. We found in some of the people that we heard from out of state, for instance, that a student success course made a world of difference, particularly in students who were not well-prepared. How to study, how to time manage, you know, how to take notes. I mean, all those kinds of things that some of us take for granted frequently is a block to a student in succeeding. So we do recommend, in our recommendations, that there be student success courses. Now, we're a little bit, you know, we're cautious about the fact that we're not trying to tell every college how to run its business. We understand there are a lot of experts on every campus, there are a lot of faculty who know what they're doing and so forth, but we are pointing out some of the things that lead to student success. And one of the things that leads to student success is no doubt better preparation in terms of teaching students who may come particularly from homes where there's not an understanding of higher education, they're well-meaning homes, and so if they can get a student success course or some kind of student success element that will help them when they first get to college, it will be really to their advantage.
So I'm going to move quickly to a question that we had from someone who's So, I'm going to move quickly to a question that we had from someone who's watching us online. Tim, who's at Ventura College, had a question about the, the sort of bigger-picture conversations that the task force is having about adult education and the link with K-12 and other systems of education. I'm wondering if maybe Eric, you'd like to reply to that?
The, the task force recommends that, so this is in the, the section of the, of the report that deals with improving the education of basic, basic skills students. The task force has a recommendation that is really pointed at state leaders, and it's emerging from the, the problem that has occurred when the K-12 adult education funds have been flexed, they've been put in, into a flexible category. And as a result, on the K-12 side, what we've seen is what was initially a state investment of about $800 million has diminished to less than half of that. And so, those dollars have been flexed out into general-purpose activities on the K-12 side. And so, as a result, the, the services available from, from K-12 districts to, to support adult students with basic skills needs has diminished appreciably. And so, the recommendation from the task force is really just to put, put that issue back in the court of, of state leaders and asking them the question, has that changed, is that change in alignment with California's social and economic needs? And the, really, the, the point of this is calling on state leaders to, to look at, on doing that flexibility, so those dollars can be reallocated to, to support our basic skills needs, whether that's in the K-12 budget or in our budget. But one way or the other, I think the task force's feeling is essentially, those, those dollars need to be put back towards this critical mission. And in, in doing so, the state leader should provide some, some additional clarity about the relative roles of the community colleges in providing those functions relative to the, to the K-12 system. You know, there's a lack of current policy at the state level that's been further undermined, again, by this flexibility on the K-12 dollars.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a couple of questions queued up here, and then I'll get to folks that haven't, folks seem to be filling out forms as we're going along here, so that's perfect. Thank you. Jeff Marianow, I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. So, I'm in receipt of a whole stack of letters from your students, thank you, but it sounds like you have a question about how the task force is defining student success?
It, it has to do with the scorecard. I think that, just from my perspective, it would be rather hard to measure in concrete terms with 15 units or certificate for some of our ESL students, because they may just want to improve English, they may want to just adjust to the United States, what else? They may just want to help their children in school. I just think that, that looking at a success card like what you're proposing, it does have its merits, but it also means that there's going to be some students off the radar. That was just a comment. Oh, and also, just that language learning itself is not necessarily a linear process where we can expect our students within four or even eight semesters to enroll, let's say, in a transfer-level course. That was just a comment.
I was just going to say, yeah, and the report card would have those elements in it, but it doesn't, it doesn't keep local districts from looking at, at, at local measures that they think are important to them to measure. And, and if that in a, in a local district was important to say, how many, how many, we're in a really high immigrant community, and, and so, let's look at how many immigrants are coming in and taking clusters of classes for very specific purposes but don't meet these other criteria. That may be, that may very well be one of the elements that they would want to include in their local, you know, one of the local elements when they develop their report card. So, it doesn't preclude that. I mean, the, the, the report card would start out with these metrics, obviously, I mean, you know, kind of across the board. But it doesn't mean that locally, you can't then even drill down even further and say, "For us, we want to look at this particular population," or "We want to, we want to look at how we do, how we do in this particular case." You need the mic, you need the mic.
My question would be, how would they be reflected at the state level? Because this, we're talking about a local phenomenon, whether or not the student, let's say, is able to get meaningful employment, or they feel better just being in the United States and adjusting to being a citizen here. That is curious to me, how, that, that to me is very hard to measure, because it is abstract.
Well, we can't simply because there are exceptions refuse accountability. That's the problem. I mean, we can't say, well, you know, in other words, what we might say is Fresno City College, we might say. So, we're looking at Fresno City College and the number of degrees that they have, the number of transfers that they have, the number of individuals who complete basic skills over a period of time, you could look at rates. Now, sure, there are those who come and only want to take two courses. So, it's, as I think Ben has pointed out very well, a, a college could look at some other ways that are peculiar to their community. But one of the things that I must tell you is that in a, in a time of accountability, we can't simply say, you know, I cited a, a statistic that said, of those who complete 12 units and, and have attempted a basic skills core, I mean, a, a basic course, that only 52% either transfer, get a degree, or get a certificate. Now, there are a lot of exceptions for good reasons. Somebody said, you know, "My mother died," or "I moved to another area," or whatever. So, there are those exceptions. But the point is that there are 48% of those who didn't complete. There are reasons for a small percentage of those, but some way, somehow, the overall picture ought to be improving. That's all we're saying. So, it's not, not that, I mean, all of us could cite, for instance, I can tell you that some people don't finish their certificate because they get a job. Maybe they're going after a welding certificate, and they got so proficient at welding that they got offered a job. But that's not a failure, and I understand that. But I don't think we can constantly use those kinds of excuses and say, "Well, we're not going to be measured at all," because this is, in other words, we ought to take the leadership on what the accountability measures ought to be. Because let me tell you something, if we don't take the leadership ourselves, there will be some outside forces that will take the leadership, and we won't like the way they measure us. Well, you know, there was a big headline just two weeks ago in, in newspapers saying, "How much billions of dollars are being wasted in community colleges by the number who aren't completing?" Now, the associate, the Association of Community Colleges answered that pretty well, but I'm not sure that everybody read their answer. So, I'm just trying to say, let's, let's figure out accountability measures that are generally make sense, and let's use them ourselves, and let's do, let's do our own reforms, is what I think makes sense, because as someone who spent 12 years in the legislature, every once in a while, some legislator's going to get an idea that you're not going to like very well. And I'm not going to like very well, and I'd rather us carry on this conversation among ourselves and come up with the answers that we think are legitimate ways to look at our enterprise.
And I, I just add, I, your points heard, and I think one of the, one of the things we can do is, is, you know, the folks working on, on looking, looking at the, you know, possible revisions to the plan, is to consider how success metrics for English learners are incorporated in the scorecard. Perhaps the metrics that we're looking at in basic skills might capture some of that, but maybe that could be augmented. And I think clearly, this is actually an area where we, we, I think it's beneficial for our system to spotlight this. We're on the front lines in terms of bringing forward populations that are California's future. And so, the more that we can reflect that in our scorecard metrics, we ought to take credit for that, and we ought to care about that and, and put, put a focus there. So, your, your points heard.
Donna Cooper, you've been very patient, and you have a couple of very specific questions about, it looks like about common assessment and the alternative basic skills funding formula.
Yes, the, probably the shortest answer one is the one on the basic skills, the alternative funding. Do you think that that incentive will be enough to, to pay for the increase, perhaps more directed basic skills, the alternatives that we're talking about, accelerated learning? So, the alternative funding, do you think that that'll be enough of an incentive for colleges to rework? And will there be enough funding for that to happen?
Well, it, it would be more, I think the way the task force is looking at it is, is as much that it provides flexibility and, and resources. So, the, you know, the, in terms of, it, it does provide incentive, but, but essentially, what the task force was really trying to get at was this issue of, as long as colleges are, are constrained by having to use an FTS, a portionment funding model that, that drips the funding in over multiple terms and years, that, that limits the options. And so, the proposal's really, I guess you could say it's about incentive, but it's probably even more so about flexibility, is allowing districts to access the money in a, in a more compressed way and providing a more intensive set of services and instruction to, to move students forward. Now, at the end of the day, it's not going to cost any more money than we did, than we'd spend through this other allocation mechanism. What it allows is the district to access the money more quickly upfront in, in order to make that investment in a more intensive way. But the, the, the proposal's envisioned in a way where the net cost wouldn't be any greater to the state. It's just, again, compacting the, the term in which that funding is provided.
Did that answer it? You want to ask one more? Or a follow? Sure. It, you, the, the second question hasn't been asked yet, so, yeah.
The second question has to do with the, the new assessment, the common assessment tool and the mandatory assessment. And I know that, that recommendation, there are two that are tied together, I think 2.0 and then 8.1, I think, with the Student Services Initiative. The question, the question I have about that is, I'm all for all of, all of the pieces that are in there, but one of the questions is, that I have is, will that do away with multiple measures? I didn't see that in there. I know, we talked about, it talks about getting rid of EAP. And the other is, would colleges have the option to do selfplacement and to continue multiple measures, or would it be like only the common assessment and if they wanted to have access to the Student Services Initiative stuff?
Well, I'll try, I'll try a little swing at that. I'm not sure that I understand all you're saying about multiple measures. However, what I am saying is that right now, our present system is disadvantaging students greatly. We have 112 colleges, which have the freedom to have 112 different forms of assessment. We want to come up with a common assessment that has really finely-defined diagnosis, that not only has a cutoff score, but more than that says, drills down and says, "This is what your weakness is." Like, for instance, let's just take something like, say, you're weak in math. It may be that what you're really weak in are fractions, and what you really need is an intensive modular approach on fractions rather than a semester-long course on math. So, we want a good diagnosis, and we want common assessment, because we just frankly can't possibly, I mean, the, the present system, they have common assessment in CSU, for instance, they have common assessment in UC. You don't go to, say, Cal State University at Fresno and take an assessment test, and then if you transfer to Cal State San Francisco, you have to take another assessment test because they have a separate assessment test. So, some way, somehow, our present system is disadvantaged students and is more costly. If we had one common assessment, I can guarantee you, the volume of that would be a lot less expensive than our present method. So, it is a recommendation, and maybe it's a controversial recommendation, you know, maybe somebody in a particular college is very fond of the particular assessment that they use there. But when we think about what, what the disadvantage it is to students, then we, we have to raise some questions. So, maybe somebody else can answer some, some of your questions, because I, I'm not a testing expert by any means. But does somebody else want to try and just add to that?
Yeah. No, I, I think that, that, the, the only thing I would add is that there, there would be nothing in this plan that would prohibit a district from using additional assessments or, or measures if those were useful. The, you know, the chancellor pointed out the, the benefits of having a common assessment across the system. Another benefit that I think is worth emphasizing is the cost savings, is that if we, by procuring a centralized assessment at the state level, we can drive the cost of that assessment down appreciably to a level where costs would no longer have to be a factor in, in local colleges' decision about applying the assessment. We've heard disturbing reports from districts that are actually backing off from assessment because they can't afford it. By, by driving the cost down to maybe 20% of what, what it is now and funding it at the state level, we can do, do away with that barrier.
Yeah, I would, just to, just add a couple of, of other thoughts to it. Yeah, I don't think multiple measures is eliminated by this recommendation. However, AB 743 was passed, which is a law that now requires common assessment in community colleges. That particular one speaks to a, an off-the-shelf assessment tool. I think our, our statewide academic senate, and there might be folks in the audience who could be more, more articulate on this, but our statewide academic senate folks have been working on a common assessment tool, and they take issue with the requirement that this be an off-the-shelf assessment tool. At some point, my sense is, you know, after the bell rings and the, the, the bell rings on the 12th round, that that will be resolved somehow, either the senate or the, or the, or the assemblyman will win. But there will be common assessment, because it is important. I mean, I think Chancellor Scott is absolutely correct. I mean, we have districts, we have colleges within districts that don't accept each other's assessments. It doesn't make any sense. So, you, you know, you pack up and go 10 miles down the road, and then you have to take another exam. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. And, and sometimes when, and they have different cut scores, so they use the same tool maybe. Somebody can get into English when they hear, but they can't get over there. It, it's inefficient, it's detrimental to our students, and it's a recommendation that, you know, whose time has come.
So, it looks like I have another assessment-related question or comment here. And while the mic's getting to you, I have four people in the queue. Linda Gardner, Tabitha Villalba, Lacey Barnes, and Dorothy Smith.
My name is Linda Wong, and I'm a counselor at Modesto Junior College. I had another question, but when you were talking about the assessment, I mean, I think it's interesting to, I think, to research a common assessment. However, you just briefly mentioned that I think the cut scores are going to be an issue, because each college, you know, when they teach certain English courses or math courses, that content may be different than in other colleges, and I think you're going to have, I don't know how you're going to come up with common cut scores for, for all colleges to follow.
Yeah, I don't think that we know that either as a task force, but I do think that that's ultimately a conversation that the senate, if the academic senate is, is having that conversation, I mean, that may be something, but, but ultimately, as we look at SB 1440, for instance, which is, which is requiring community colleges and the CSUs to come together to align, you know, 120-unit bachelor's degrees, what, what there is is conversation about courses that are substantially the same. So, so I don't know how that will be resolved where colleges are having different cut scores, but it's just, my sense is, someone other than the three people up here are going to solve that.
Which, actually, Ms. Wong, your, your question raises a good point that we probably should have said at the beginning of our presentation, which is, if you recall, this report on student success and its recommendations was requested by the legislature and the Board of Governors. So, these recommendations are operating at what I would term to be about the 30,000-foot level. Underneath all of these, we will have, nothing's going to go into effect tomorrow. I mean, as, as Chancellor Scott mentioned, you have legislative changes, you have regulatory changes, and then you have an entire implementation strategy beneath that, similar to the 1440 strategy where the legislature said, you know, "This is the way the world will work." And then you have teams and task forces of people figuring out how to make that happen. So, we very much envision an entire underlying implementation strategy under these recommendations where those kinds of issues will be sorted out. Linda Gardner.
When you were talking about, like, finding out how many
Can you tuck a little bit more into the mic?
Huh?
Just hold it, just hold it close to your mouth.
Hold the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Eat the mic.
I know, I talk softly. When you were talking about finding out how many Latinos, how many, you know, whites, et cetera, were, you know, finishing their courses, I was sitting here thinking, well, maybe they're going to be maybe they're going to be starting like a track system, like let's say 25 students come in at the same time and track those students? Is that one of the recommendations?
I'll let Eric answer this.
I'm not sure I understood the question. Tracking, are you talking in terms of looking at like a cohort span in terms of measuring the metric? Or are you talking about putting students on a track that they have to follow? I don't think there's any tracking elements in this.
Are you talking like tracking like the old K-12ers used to do? Where either a blackbird or a buzzard? No. Or a bluebird or something? Nothing like that here.
Ruth Lumen, did I skip you? There you go. Okay, sorry. I was under the impression we'd answered your issue, so I apologize.
Hi, my name is Ruth Lumen and I'm an ESL instructor from Modesto Junior College and I'm representing our ESL department there. And I wanted to address the issue of equity as it relates to ESL. And I wanted to read a portion from an earlier draft of the recommendations where it says, "With current limitations in state education funding, there is a need to prioritize those students whose basic skills needs can be expeditiously met so they can move on to further study in higher education." And I know that the language has been softened in the more current draft of the recommendations, but I'd like to point out that the fact that the task force is moving to expedite education inherently puts language learners or ESL students at a disadvantage. And as most of us know who have studied a foreign language before, it is a longer process. And I'd also like to note that ESL is not remedial or developmental education. ESL courses are closer actually in nature and methodology to transferable foreign language courses than to our basic skills counterparts. The curriculum is academically rigorous and it is challenging. When native English speakers take the same level courses in a foreign language, these same kinds of courses are considered transferable at the university level. So what I request of the task force is to consider the challenges that our ESL students have, not because they are developmental learners, but because they are learning a foreign language and they need to be given the same opportunities, actually more opportunities than our native English-speaking counterparts in the community college system. And I'd like you to try to reconsider some of the recommendations made specifically for ESL students and also encourage the participation of ESL practitioners in the following drafts of the recommendations.
Well, we certainly appreciate that and would like for you to make your, you know, contribution of the way in which you'd like to see it worded. I don't think there's anything, you know, I attended every task force meeting and I don't recall any kind of discussion that was in any sense deprecating ESL. Our talk about acceleration and intensification of basic skills is because our studies indicated that when this is done, it's more effective than when basic skills are taught over a longer period of time. It doesn't, in other words, it may well be that you might have 12 units of contextualized basic skills in one semester that includes other subjects as well. And these people, the results of, say, what has been done in, say, Cabrillo College or in Chubot College is rather remarkable. And it simply says that they, by accelerating basic skills, have had a higher degree of success. Now, they don't teach less basic skills, but they do it in a more intensified way. I don't recall any discussion of ESL in the same way. I don't think that, so if there's some concerns, if there's some language that inadvertently has had some bad consequences for ESL students, we encourage you to submit that language. That's just fine. Obviously, in a 20-member task force, it was impossible for every group to be represented. It just, you know, we'd have had a task force of 85 people and you can't get a lot done with a group of that large. So we did listen a lot and we'd be glad to listen to any kind of informed ESL suggestions.
Yeah, and I would just add, absolutely, you're right. There was never any intent to speak about ESL in any other way than a very, very important part of what we do in community colleges. And there were some strong advocates for equity for populations that are underrepresented and we recognized that. I mean, this notion of access, doing this while still maintaining access was a big, really important thing. But, so I really appreciate your comments. And by the way, that's maybe the best description of ESL that I have ever heard. I mean, I, you know, I learned languages, I learned English as a young kid because I had wonderful teachers on the elementary school and I kind of stumbled along. But that's really for adults, I mean, that, you're absolutely correct. When those people are taking, are literally learning another language, it is as rigorous and as tough as someone learning the French that Jack was talking about when he's going to go to Paris, but.
So we are, we are in receipt of a letter and a set of comments from the ESL faculty statewide that mimic your comments, so we'll make sure that our task force members understand this distinction. So we're almost at 1 o'clock, but I have three people left in the queue, so if you all are willing to stick around just for a couple more minutes, we are too. So Tabitha?
Before I ask this question, I wanted to, because it's a bold question and it's sort of related to my opinion, but I was taught that education is a privilege, not a right. I came from a family of seven children. My parents were both ESL. They were unable to support me financially and so I put myself through school. They were very emotionally supportive, but that's what I did. I paid for my classes and made sure that I went to class and graduated. So my question is sort of related to that. It's something that I haven't heard discussed yet, and that is, to what degree do the recommendations hold students accountable?
Well, there's actually a whole section on that, which is, it's termed incentivizing successful student behavior. Probably the most significant recommendation, really, it's on two fronts. One is on enrollment or registration priority. So by giving students a higher registration priority if they do things such as completing an education plan, partaking in orientation assessment and placement, making academic progress, that moves a student higher up in the priority ranking. Likewise, as the chancellor pointed out, once a student gets to 110 units, then they're going to receive a lower priority. So, you know, the student that accumulates that many credits without accomplishing an objective is going to have to take a backseat there. So I think those, that's a reorientation of incentives that really does enhance accountability that a student faces. Likewise, on the BOG fee waiver, the Board of Governors' fee waiver, the proposal is that academic standards be applied towards the eligibility of those awards. And so going forward, students would have to, again, achieve academic progress in order to maintain eligibility for BOG fee waiver. Fairly significant type of accountability there. So those are the recommendations that are most on target with that theme.
Next, I have Lacey Barnes, and then we will close with Ms. Dorothy Smith.
When districts are locally choosing to decrease counseling services, given their actual and in some cases perceived fiscal crisis, what does the task force envision or how the increased need for counseling services and assessment of assisting students with their educational plans, gathering data likely for the scorecard, and dealing with the shift in basic skills, and with this last comment, dealing with helping students to achieve those incentives? What is the task force envisioning on that front?
Well, again, I think it was really perhaps the most significant finding of the task force was the fact that the erosion of our student support programs, our student services, has had a fundamental negative impact on our students and on our colleges. And as a result, this restructuring of the programs, the consolidation of the categorical programs, I think, you know, I know there are strong feelings on that issue, but I'd encourage people to pay attention to the aspect of that recommendation that said that funding for the Student Support Initiative, which is essentially assessment, orientation, counseling, guidance, that that sector of support shall be our number one budget priority as we move forward. And so what it's really seeking to do is to put money back in that pot so that colleges have the wherewithal, have the resources to provide students with those kind of, both the front-end supports and the ongoing supports. And so it's really at the heart of this proposal.
So, I mean, what we do know is that, you know, we certainly have been in some very tough budget times, we all know that. But the funding to the system and to Proposition 98 will increase. So money will come back to this system. It might come back slowly, it might come back in small amounts at first. But the legislature is going to be in a position when they take a look at the, what would be 11 or 12, 13 budget, they'll be looking at how to spend dollars in K-14 education. And what this task force says is, dear legislature, we think you need to put your resources into support services for students, first and foremost. So maybe it's only $5 million, maybe it's $100 million, maybe it's $250 million. We don't know, we don't know what all of those monetary projections look like, but we do say that this is the first call for new dollars and we do know there will be new dollars. So lastly, I have Dorothy Smith.
Thank you. This will only, this will be brief, but my question is two, three, four. First of all, I like to ask the question, have you, has the task force thought about those students who I consider caught in the middle, whose parents don't make enough money but make too much to actually help them to finance their education? And the reason that is concerned to me, we do have financial aid for students who are in poverty, however, but many of the students who don't, have you checked this one out? Many of the students who don't complete their education have to drop out of school because their parents can't help them and they do work. Those are also students who may not complete that, their education within the timeframe allotted. So we also need to think about the middle-class student. I know that's maybe a dirty word to someone. However, we do need to think about those students because they do drop out, have to work, and then come back. And also I want to say, as I heard the gentleman say earlier in terms about poverty, I was also one of those students who was raised in poverty, didn't have running water or bathroom in my house until I was in high school. I worked the fields. But I want to say, living in poverty does not make you not do well in school. And when we talk about partnerships with the K-12, I think the K-12 has a real responsibility to helping students learn to read, write, and be ready when they come to post-secondary. And I also think in terms of, when we say people, students come to us and they can't read and write and compute, I find that kind of strange too because reading, writing, and computing is not really that hard if the system is doing what it's supposed to do. I've also suggested at one time about what I call a pre-college. I worked for the K-12. So in terms of assessment tests or the placement tests, maybe we should start giving those tests to students in the 11th, maybe 10th, 11th grade so they can see exactly what they need based on what Chancellor Scott has said. So they can see what they really need. And we start this pre-college before they actually come to us. Because I do believe many of them do get discouraged because when they come, they, my students think, I'm a high school graduate and it's taken me five, 10, or so, not 10, but maybe five or so years because they have to take two or three courses in remedial classes and they don't graduate. That's another thing, and I'm really putting forth a pre-college. Maybe we can do some things with K-12 to work on those placement tests so the students and the teachers can see exactly what they need to do to make sure that these students are prepared before they come to our doors. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Incidentally, we do, there are, there is an early assessment program in the 11th grade that many of our colleges are participating in. That is, it was originally designed by CSU. But what it does is that in the 11th grade, they are, they have an early assessment program and it defines whether or not someone is college-ready. So that in the 12th grade, if they're deficient in math or English, they can take those courses and use that senior year, which some people think is normally wasted, to get ready for college. And one of the things that's very strong in this recommendation is, is a better tie between high schools and college. Now, I can't reply to every item that you mentioned. We, I think the way we help middle-class students is the fact that we have the lowest tuition of any community college in the nation. So the fact that a student can go to California community colleges full-time for $1,080 a year, and we're working hard on trying to bring down the prices of those textbooks, maybe with the e-textbooks and so forth, so there are a lot of ways in which we are doing what we can to help those students who are struggling. One of the things that's in this recommendation that we didn't mention this morning is that for every part-time student who seeks financial aid, we'll give them the financial aid that they need, but we're also suggesting that a little sheet be placed right beside that that says, if you went full-time, this is the financial aid you'd get. And many of them might be encouraged to go full-time as a result. And the studies indicate that full-time students have a lot better chance of completing than part-time students. So it's been such a pleasure to be with you this morning and to hear all of your comments. You obviously are intensely involved in your community colleges, you're here because you care. We've listened to what you have to say. I will guarantee you that our final recommendations are going to mirror some of these suggestions and that have been given to us. We've worked hard on this and the one thing we have in mind is that we're doing everything we can to see to it that every community college student succeeds in the goal that he or she has, whether it's two courses, whether it's a vocational certificate, whether it's transferred to Fresno State or UC Merced or wherever they intend to go. And also for those who, we can address their basic skills and lift them up and move them in the right direction. Thank you so much for your time.